Welcome to the February ninth Ash- Ashkam Council Meeting. Will we please call the roll?
Erickson?
Here.
Ashkam?
Present.
Ford?
Here.
Allison Aspe?
Here.
Prowsey?
Here.
Mugrow?
Here.
Palmeri? Present six.
Councilmember Erickson will now lead us in invocation followed by the pledge allegiance.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we honor those who have come before us, including the original stewards of this area, the Menominee and Hochunk nations. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mayor Palmeri wanted to let everybody know that she's just running a little late and when she pops in, we'll hand it off to her. First, we have a presentation from Doug Gearing, Director Health Officer for Winnebago County. So take it away, Doug.
Thanks Jake. Reporting live from the county administration building today. Jake, I was gonna need to share my, my content here. So if you can just walk me through that if I just hit share here. And I can go to screen two. There we go. Great. Well, thanks for the opportunity to, uh, I wanna make sure that, uh, share. There we go. Um, thanks for the opportunity to just address the council and hopefully answer any questions. Just give you a quick update on, you know, what the public health department's doing and what's the status of COVID in Winnebago County right now. And I'll try to give you a little statewide perspective as well. On your screen right now is our daily situation update. Many of you have seen this before. We put this out pretty much Monday through Friday where we give a daily update on the numbers of cases that have been sent to the public health department. We are still now, you know, 10 plus months into this, 11 months, almost 11 months into this now, you know, receiving all of the positive case reports. And, and just so you know, uh, the, people are tested with a PCR test or with an antigen test now. We get both of those test results and we report those out on our, on our situation update. One of the lowest numbers we've ever recorded today, uh, nine PCR positive cases and eight probable cases. So total of 17 cases, uh, and up down way from our highs, uh, months ago. You know, where we were reporting, you know, well over a hundred to 150 cases a day. Um, this is a bit lower day than we would normally have. I can show you our, uh, our graph here and then some of the controls are getting in the way on my screen here. Trying to navigate through that. There we go. All right. Um, this is, uh, this is a picture of our case rate trends since July. And prior to July, um, they remain quite, uh, quite in this low area, which actually used to fill up most of the screen. And we had one bump up, um, you know, prior to that in, in early June, uh, the, we had the 18 to 24 year old population with an increase and we had the CDC here to do a study. Kinda came back down from that. And then in fall, uh, right after Labor Day, about the time the school started, we had a very large ramp up of cases that sustained at this very high plateau for a long period of time. We've come down, uh, so really since November, we've been in a general downward trend in Winnebago County. In Wisconsin, that trend's been, uh, a little bit more recent and nationally it's been very recent. So we are, uh, where we used to be, uh, very high in the country. Um, and at one point, you know, top on the list of the New York Times, um, we are, our rate, our case rates have really come back down and you can see where they are today. Here, these rates though are still pretty high. Um, as you can see, you know, they're as low as they, as they were uh, in our ramp up in September when things were shooting up at an exponential rate. Um, and we really thought that, uh, the, those numbers were pretty high. And, and so I just wanna, you know, put in perspective that while they went so much higher, uh, and they've, and they've come down quite a bit, we're still in a range where a disease transmission is actively occurring in our community. And we really need to stay the course on wearing masks, um, on having those, um, you know, those socially distant, uh, gatherings and small gatherings. And, um, and, and really doing what we can to, uh, protect one another because remember, you know, most of this disease is transmitted before you have symptoms. And, and so that's the real danger here. Uh, you may pass this on to somebody else without even knowing it. Masks help tremendously in reducing that transmission and, and, and we need to keep that rolling. So on a case rate rise, um, you can see, uh, where we're at and, and we have the cumulative numbers here as well. We've had, you know, over 13, almost 14,000 cases recorded here. Um, cumulatively with the, probable cases, um, we're definitely over 16,000 cases that have been identified in Winnebago County. We've had 73,000 negative tests. And then our deaths, which I can scroll down to here are at 174. I can give you a quick picture of how those are rolling out right now. Deaths by week, uh, this graph here just shows, um, that we really ramped up in September after our cases started rising. And we've come, we've definitely come down. We're still reporting some deaths. It's a lagging indicator and we'll continue to have, uh, these sporadic deaths reported even with a lower case rate. Hospitalizations have gone down. That's another very good indicator for us to show that, um, we've had a decline. And then this here is just a, a graph of the cumulative deaths and, and you can see obviously where there's a, a sharper angle. That's when we were, you know, had more rapid rates of death, but to date, you know, nearly, uh, nearly 180 so far. Our death rate has actually been pretty low in Winnebago County compared, um, to many others. All right. Um, moving on from, from that, I just wanted to show you the website. Um, as it's set up, we just did some recent updates. A vaccine is the big issue and I'll, I'll, I'll be moving to that pretty quickly. I'm sure that's what you wanna hear about most today. But I also wanted to show you how to, how to get information, um, on our site. The, uh, just three tabs for vaccine information, testing information, and then, and a variety of data. I'm gonna go through data and there's a lot here. So you can just kinda go through that. We update our, our, what we call our, our data snapshot or our dashboard here every day with the numbers in addition to that situation report. So if you don't read that, you can just come here and see the numbers on where we're at. All right. In addition to that graph, I wanted to show you just kinda what things look like in the state today. So this is the, this is part of a report that, uh, um, the state puts out their emergency operations center or the, uh, state EOC puts out every day. And it just shows, um, you know, as of yesterday, how many cases were reported by county throughout the state. And, and you can see the more populated counties obviously have the higher numbers. Um, but overall as a state, the numbers are, are definitely down. And then here, um, this is a federal report, uh, that comes from the White House every week. And this gives a, a glimpse of what new cases look like. And so you can see, um, like the trend that I had before for Winnebago County. Here's the trend for the state and we're definitely, you know, still in that downward trend and have been for a period of time now. In terms of testing, um, the total tests that we see in Winnebago County right now, we're seeing about 600 tests per day and those are the PCR tests. Those are not the antigen tests. Uh, we don't have a, a full count on antigen tests because only the positives are reported to public health. Um, and then so from the PCR tests, uh, we're able to calculate a percent positivity. Ideally, we like to be, um, you know, below 5% and, and even more ideally below 3% to feel like we're having enough people being tested to give us a, a good picture of what's happening. And so total tests right now, you can see, uh, statewide, you know, are on a seven day, um, average, um, you know, are a little bit below 30,000. Our percent positivity is down around 5%. In Winnebago County, our percent positivity is, has just, um, eked below 5%. And that's based just on PCR, as I mentioned, um, the, the, the hazard there is that, um, with the availability of antigen tests now, um, that are rapid, it's often preferred to, if you have an antigen test available and somebody has symptoms, to give them an antigen test that if that's positive, that's considered, um, you know, confirmatory in terms of, of disease. And a PCR test may not be done. Um, that does give us probably a little bit of an artificial, artificially low positivity rate because the PCR test may often be with persons, on persons that maybe are less likely to have symptoms. And then here's the new death data. Um, uh, deaths have been much slower to decline, um, um, over time from, uh, with, with the case drops that we've had. And here it gives you an idea of what, um, things look like in the nation right now in terms of activity. So this is new cases per 100,000 residents, which is the same way that, you know, that we report data. And really it's just the, the, the colors here that you're, you're looking at. You know, Wisconsin has definitely gotten a lot pinker. You can see down at the bottom of the screen on the right here, three months ago, um, you know, us and the Dakotas in Minnesota were really the hotspots in the nation, uh, in terms of, of cases. Um, and now things have really, have really slowed down in our area, but are still fairly high in, in some of the south. And so nationally, this is still, um, you know, quite a concern, even though things seem like they're, they're, they're not so hot here locally lately. And here I, um, just to jump back on testing, this is also from our website. I wanna talk a little bit about where you can get tests. We have the, uh, the Sunny View site that, um, um, is at, um, Sunny View Expo. That site, uh, has been, we've done, I think about 52,000 tests out there now. It's open Tuesday through Friday. Um, and that is a PCR test. And it's typically drive-through, but during this really cold weather right now, we are bringing people inside the building to get a test. Other locations, um, for tests that are nearby are the UW Oshkosh, the rapid result testing. So this is a antigen testing site. And they are doing a few hundred tests a day there. Um, there are some pharmacies that have it. In Nina, we also have a drive-through site with, associated with Theta Care. That's a health and human services site. That is a, um, um, a PCR site where you do the swab under observation. Um, and then you can see the other sites here. Our website's always gonna have, um, the, the latest information related to availability for testing. We are really trying to encourage people to test, uh, so that they can hopefully minimize transmission to others. If, um, if you've been exposed to someone, we really want you to get tested, you know, about four to five days. Typically not any earlier than that, uh, to see if you have become infected and that you might be able to transmit it to someone else. So moving on from that, uh, we'll get to vaccine, which I think, uh, is something that most people wanna hear about. And we have, um, just completed the, um, the Sunny View site, uh, that ran last week. And to give you a, an idea of where we're at as a county right now, um, with, with all the data from Sunny View in, um, just over 11% of the county residents have now had at least a single dose of vaccine, uh, either the Pfizer or the Moderna. The, um, um, the graphs here below, uh, indicate, uh, a little bit of a demographic breakdown. And we're really happy to say that we're doing extremely well now in the 65 plus category. Over 42% of the Winnebago County resident population aged 65 and older has received at least one dose of vaccine. And, uh, that's definitely higher than the state rate and, um, we're really happy to see that, um, we've been able to get that much vaccine out within Winnebago County. We have some breakdown by race, um, and by sex and, um, and by ethnicity, just so that we can track and then also identify if we've got some, um, if we have some reach out that we need to do, difficult populations to reach. We know that we're, you know, we have some populations that are more difficult to reach and will be, and are working on trying to, to, to reach those populations. The, there's a little bit more of a, a breakdown about vaccine and where it's going. So right now, you know, vaccine is coming into the state at roughly 70 to 80,000 doses a week. That, um, vaccine is weekly allocated out, um, to healthcare, to public health, to pharmacies and some other enrolled providers. The lion's share of vaccine goes to healthcare. And so you can see, um, if here by percent vaccinated by clinic site, almost half of the vaccines that have been administered so far in Winnebago County have been through healthcare. And then about 38%, 40% are through public health and pharmacy. Of that, uh, of that pie chart there for public health and pharmacy, public health has probably done about, uh, 55 to 60% of, of this, this 38% chunk. So a little bit more than half. And then the other half would be pharmacies. 17% would be other, other sites not classified, um, uh, as, as healthcare pharmacies or, or public health. The forecast for, for vaccine, uh, is pretty constant for the rest of this month. And then we do expect to see, um, an, uh, a gradual increase in vaccine, um, throughout the rest of, uh, the winter, spring and into summer. A new program is starting, uh, where, uh, vaccine is being given to pharmacies. So you should see, uh, Walgreens sites, uh, standing up, I believe two in Oshkosh and, and two in Nina will be included, um, in that where that'll be an additional site to get vaccine. Local pharmacies certainly have vaccine and have been giving it. Those, those typically have been, those pharmacies have been working with, uh, you know, their local agencies in, in their area or have been taking phone calls and putting people on a list. The vaccine, uh, flow is extremely inconsistent. Uh, we've, we were very fortunate. So we've been working with all the healthcare systems, Ascension, Aurora, Theta Care. And we found out for the Sunny View Clinic, which we ran last week, um, we found out the Thursday before last week that Ascension had some vaccine that they could, um, push our way if we could get it out. And so we stood up the Sunny View site and vaccinated oh, roughly 5,000 people out there last week. Um, it went quite well. Uh, we prioritized the 75 plus, uh, i- is part of our registration. And then also that first day and a half of, of the clinic out there was 75 plus. Remainder of the week was 65 plus. And, um, and of course the 75 pluses were in there as well. But we really tried to focus on those that, um, were having difficulty. We also, um, kept a, a large number of appointments open for individuals to call that weren't able to sign up online. And so we booked hundreds of people into that site that don't have internet access or a way to, to sign up online. And we also had to reschedule, um, one of the days of the clinic, one of the afternoons of the clinic, uh, because we had, um, uh, severe weather with, with, uh, with the, with the snow and then, and then extreme cold afterwards. We had anticipated opening up, um, Sunny View again this week, um, but we found out, um, that there wouldn't be vaccine available. So Sunny View is not open this week at a wall. We ordered, uh, it's, so just for an example, uh, we ordered 1,500 doses of vaccine last week as a health department, so that we could try to continue to do some, uh, community vaccinating. We received 200 doses. That is not an uncommon situation right now. Um, the, the state is receiving roughly four times the amount of requests for vaccine that they actually have. And, uh, and with a lot of it going to, to healthcare, um, there just isn't that much, uh, to go around, uh, for others. So we will continue to work with the healthcare systems. Um, we have, uh, we've been reaching out to other vaccinators in the community. And, and we're really trying to help coordinate and fill the gaps and identify those hard to reach populations as part of our role in supporting vaccination. As soon as we have more vaccine, um, we will look into standing up Sunny View again. Other vaccination opportunity, uh, there's, uh, that are happening, um, the city of Appleton is standing, uh, one up at the expo center there. So if you go onto the city of Appleton website, you can see information about that, um, location. And then it's likely that there'll be, um, other locations popping up. We will continue to work with, um, our partners, uh, and then last week we worked with the National Guard. And that, we had, uh, what we call, you know, four, uh, guard teams, you know, so groups of about five people, that are from the National Guard that helped stand up our site. And then we surrounded them, um, with our staff and with volunteers. And we had many, uh, uh, the county did a great job of, of, of providing additional support. And, um, we had a pretty successful clinic out there last week. The, the, the longer term forecast on vaccine, um, is such that we would expect right now, uh, given that Johnson and Johnson, uh, vaccine is likely to be approved, in, in the next month, uh, and have vaccine hopefully rolling out by May, that as a state, in order to reach 80% of the entire population with two doses, we would hope that we would reach that mark in August. So we, we know that, uh, right now that vaccine demand is very high. And we cannot get enough vaccine. We will eventually reach a point where, um, those that are very eager to get the vaccine, uh, will have gotten it. And, and really there will be vaccine for everybody that wants it. Um, and then we'll have, uh, likely those that are maybe just the later adopters, that are waiting to see how this goes for, for people that are taking vaccine first. And then ultimately, um, you know, well, hopefully there'll be those that right now are maybe not as interested in vaccine, that'll, that'll be interested in taking it after seeing, you know, how well it's working. We hope that we can keep cases down in the meantime. I think one of the things that we're very concerned about, are the variants that are in, uh, place right now. So the, um, uh, the Britain variant, the B117 variant of coronavirus, which is, you know, far more transmissible. Uh, it can infect more people. It may not necessarily be more severe, but it can infect more people. We're looking to s- that, that variant is likely to become the predominant strain of coronavirus, um, in the next month or so. And that means that we'll have a, um, the predominant virus in our area being that one that is more transmissible. Which is another reason why we really need to make sure that, um, just because vaccine's here and just because we're, you know, hopefully six months away from, you know, really getting to a point where we have enough people vaccinated that we can really relax, uh, some of the measures that we have in place now, that we can't do that now. And, and we really could have a resurgence, um, of vex, of, of disease again from a more contagious variant, that is likely to, to, that is already here and is, is likely to become the predominant virus that we have here. So, you know, our, our advice right now in terms of indoor gatherings is, um, you know, just because cases are down, it doesn't mean we can start opening things up. We really need to hold the course for a while yet and, and make sure that, um, um, we, we keep those gatherings to a minimum. We keep those masks on so that we can, um, reduce transmission. You know, another interesting, um, uh, piece of this is, is flu. And, and it's for somebody that says, you know, masks aren't effective. You know, one of the things that, you know, I, I can point out to is, um, is flu. And if we take a look at, let's see here. Sure, if I have that up. Just double check here. Is, is basically we have, um, and I'm sorry, I don't have that up here anymore. Is, you know, flu is almost non-existent right now. Because of the measures for COVID, the masking, the distancing, we are really not having a flu season. And normally we'd be, um, definitely in a situation right now where flu would be pretty high. We're just not seeing it at all. It really does show that the, the, um, which, you know, and, and, and flu is a little less contagious than, than coronavirus. So we would expect that if we're able to, to knock down coronavirus, we would definitely knock down the flu. So with that, um, I, um, would be happy to, to answer any questions, um, that you might have. Let me try to do a stop share here.
Okay. Thank you Doug. Um, it looks like Mayor Palmeri's back now, so we'll toss it back to her and take some questions if anybody has them. Thank you.
Good evening Doug. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I just had a couple of questions and that is, um, it's my understanding that, uh, the 1A, the phase 1A, um, which includes healthcare workers, um, that there's this classification and registration numbers and it depends on whether or not you're part of a larger healthcare system. My day job as a medical courier and classified as 1A, but we're a subcontractor, um, cause I'm in and out of the clinic. So I guess I just ask if you could explain the form on the county's website? If you're not able to get your 1A appointment, how that form works that goes through the verification of your 1A status?
Sure. Um, I'm not sure if I can speak to the form directly, but what I can tell you is that we are actively seeking out, uh, and have actively sought out unaffiliated 1A personnel. So healthcare providers that are not affiliated with a healthcare system. We have been, um, collecting that information and then setting up and referring people for vaccination. And so we have referred hundreds and hundreds of, um, unaffiliated healthcare workers, um, to the healthcare systems. Um, and we've been working as a region on that. So our, our hospital emergency readiness coalition, our HERC, is helping us centralize that. And, um, and that's where we, uh, enroll people and people that have vaccine can pull the 1As off that list. I know that we're working on, uh, trying to do about 400 of those, um, this week, uh, to try to bring any new ones, uh, down off that list. So if you're unaffiliated, you can contact the health department either through the website or through our hotline, um, at 920-232-3026. And just let us know that you're an unaffiliated healthcare provider and we will link you with vaccine.
Well, thanks for explaining that. Uh, do other council members have questions for Mr. Gearing? Councilmember Mugrow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, it's not a question. I just wanted to express my appreciation for County Health Director Gearing, uh, coming here tonight, giving us a, an update and speaking to the people of Oshkosh directly. I think it's, uh, one thing we found and I know I'd, I'd be surprised if he didn't agree is, is, uh, communication's been key during this and, um, you know, every different avenue possible to try to use it. So I appreciate you coming and speaking right to the people of Oshkosh tonight, trying to give them some info, give us some info and anything we can do to help as a, as a council and as a city, I'm, I'm quite sure we'll, we'd be willing to try to, to be a great partner with you guys. So appreciate all the work last week. Sunny View was amazing. The numbers you guys pushed out with, uh, with all your partners out there. That was awesome for the community. So appreciate the work out there.
Thank you. Yeah. And I, I wish I could, you know, tell you when the next clinic's gonna be, but it's a, it's a week to week, um, a request for vaccine right now. That process has just been modified this week for the first time. So we're hoping to get information about two weeks worth of vaccine. Uh, and that'll help us, uh, with the planning. And we'll continue to push out press releases, information to community partners, post our, on our website, um, and continue to offer ways to register for those clinics, for those that don't have internet access. You know, public health is really trying to assume that role of that, uh, that provider of last resort for persons that can't get it elsewhere that, um, don't, uh, don't have a good connection. And, and we're asking the community to help with that. So if you know of someone and, and especially that's someone that's in a priority group and right now that's, you know, our 65 plus age group, that needs vaccine, you know, please lend them a hand, help them get signed up. Um, the fastest way to do it, of course, will be online. But, you know, we'll still, we'll still take those phone calls as well. But if you know someone without a computer, and you can help them get signed up, uh, at a future clinic, um, we, we certainly would appreciate that.
And thank you also for the, uh, data walk and, uh, showing the updated, uh, visual and, um, other navigational aids on the county website. Uh, I think those things are very helpful.
Yep. Any feedback that you guys have on any of that or information that would be helpful? Um, you know, please let us know. Sir Gene and our staff has been doing a, a great job with the data and I can't say enough about the rest of our team, um, really pulling together to, to make all this happen. Certainly been quite a bit of work, you know, between, you know, starting off with, you know, contact tracing and disease investigation and, you know, having hundreds of cases a day to, to investigate and then getting testing rolling and, and now, you know, trying to, to roll out vaccine as fast as we can. It's, uh, it's, it's, it's taken a lot of, uh, a lot of efforts here and, and a lot of partner support and we appreciate your assistance.
Thank you again. All right. Well, we'll, uh, now move on to our citizen statements to council. And I'd just like to check in, uh, with Pam our clerk to see if we- And I'd just like to check in with Pam our clerk to see if we had anyone register for the general statements. This will be followed by the public comment on agenda items, just to make that distinction.
I have a Pamela Henkel that signed up. She didn't indicate what she was interested in speaking about, but I don't see that she's logged on at this time. So at this time, no citizen statements.
So Pam Henkel, are you with us? All right. Well, if she pops in later, perhaps we can oblige her. Let's see here then. We have next public comment on agenda items. And before we go to those who have registered, I'd just like to make note that we have eight emails that came in for recording. And I'll just read off the names and what they're. Let's see here. We have, they are all in relation to the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. They are all in support. We have Mary Beth Pitasch. We have, and I'm sorry, I'm having to open up individual emails here. Joyce Fron. And actually, Pam, do you have those names by chance in your orange folder? It might be more expeditious if you have them to read them off since I'm going on digital copies here.
Bob Everhard. Mary Werner. Shannon Davis Faust. Mary Beth Peach. Hetzy Gavin. Joyce Foin. Erin Thompson. And that's all I got.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. And then who do we have then for registering to speak on agenda items with us tonight?
Okay, for item number thirty four, which is resolution twenty one eighty six, we have Katie Handcock Cook.
Yes, welcome. Welcome, Kate.
Hi, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak in front of the council this evening. And I just want to say that I I'm a representative for Citizens Climate Lobby. I don't live in Oshkosh. I live in Nina. But I have worked with a number of people in the city of Oshkosh in regard to this particular item, this bill. And I wanted to, I have a a quick presentation. It would probably be about five slides. Am I allowed to share my screen? Or is that not something we do during public comment?
I believe that we have allowed that with overhead when we've met in person. Let's check in with Tony Newman on that.
Give me a minute and I will transfer presentation role if that's okay with you, Mayor.
Yes.
While he's preparing that, Kate, I'm sorry, I said Katie.
That's okay. That happens quite a lot. So I I just want to say that I was able to present to the sustainability board a few weeks ago. And this is in regard to, you know, our concerns overall as climate change. And and what we can do relative to reducing the carbon dioxide in our atmosphere. Oh, and I can share now. Let's see if this all works. And I want to share it on screen one. Oh, I hope I'm sharing that screen. And I hope it'll let me share it.
Yes, we do see that.
Oh, I like technology when it actually works. So what we're asking is that we that we're asking for an endorsement on this resolution to take action on climate pollution. We call it the carbon cash back bill because it's a lot easier to say than the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. In the packet that you received, you would, I went a little too far ahead. You'll see that there's some data on public opinion in Winnebago County. And this is collected by the Yale Program on Climate Communication Chip Chain. And and what they know is that sixty six percent of Winnebago County citizens believe that global warming is happening, that sixty six percent believe that global warming will harm future generations. Seventy two percent of Winnebago County believes that we should regulate CO2 as a pollutant. And sixty five percent of Winnebago County believes that we should require fossil fuel companies to pay a carbon fee. The bill that we are asking you to voice your support for does all does charge a fee of a fee on carbon at its source, at the oil, gas, or coal source. It transfers that money through the government and a hundred percent of the net revenue to households will go to households as a dividend. So every American citizen will receive a check on a monthly basis based on this fee that's charged. For most American households, sixty three percent of them will end up with more money in their pocket than the increased energy costs will cost them. The purpose of this, and the reason I'm talking this evening is to remind you that of stuff that's not in your packet. I want to highlight that this chart, this plan is supported by the business community. Because it does increase, it does increase jobs. It stimulates local economies. And it's good for businesses overall because they can plan for long term, low cost energy when we move our 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 energy system to renewable energy sources. The U.S. Chamber of Commerce supports it. A recent Forbes magazine article tight was titled, US, the United States will profit from eliminating carbon emissions, even if you don't care about climate. And the Business Roundtable is another endorsing body which features the CEOs of major companies. I stopped at the Bs because it goes on. There's two hundred of them. I didn't want to bother you with those. The other thing is that economists also support this, and they believe this is the only way putting of what we call a carbon fee is to reduce carbon emissions and not damage our economy. We have the bill we know is effective. It reduces the the output of carbon dioxide and significantly and very quickly. We know it's good for people. But the thing that people usually don't understand is that this can be impact, this is good for the economy. It doesn't tank your economy either nationally or locally. That's been demonstrated numerous times around the world. And it is revenue neutral. So that means that we aren't growing the size of government. The money goes through the Treasury Department. There's about two percent of the gross stays in the Treasury Department to improve, to manage the handling of the dividends. And then the American people get the rest of the money. So it's not going to government, other government programs. There are bills that do suggest that with a carbon fee, but this bill does not, which is called the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. And this is about job creation. We know that we'll see two point one million jobs. And those jobs will tend to be, people think they're going to be in the green, in in green energy, and they're not. They're in, they, because they they're in local monies in people's pockets, in local people's pockets. So we increase their head spending on healthcare locally and retail trade. That stimulates local economy.
And Kate, just one moment, we're at five minutes. Let me just check in with council members if we would like to go a little bit longer. Okay, all right. Please continue.
Actually, I'm done. I I I just wanted to say thank you again for allowing me to address you and to to hope that you will support this resolution. And the reason we're asking for it at the local level, we know that this is not something that typically cities will do. But that it has so many positive local impacts that we think it's certainly appropriate that our congressmen and senators know that our municipalities want to stimulate their local economies, want to improve their health of their citizens, and are willing to do that by use it, supporting this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Pam, do we have someone? Who is our next registered speaker?
It's on the same resolution, Patricia Dwyer-Hallquist.
Yes, welcome, Patricia.
Okay, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name's Pat Dwyer-Hallquist. My address is twenty thirty Hazel Street, Oshkosh. I'm a volunteer co-leader for the Oshkosh chapter of the Citizens Climate Lobby. The Oshkosh chapter works with the Appleton and Fond du Lac chapters and other chapters throughout Wisconsin and the United States to ask members of the U.S. Congress to pass climate legislation. Our focus has been on carbon, carbon fee and dividend legis legislation, specifically the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act that Kate was talking about. I think she explained very well what the the benefits of this legislation are, both in terms of our environment and our economy. I was going to talk about that some. But I I think the point I really would like to make is that members of Congress are very much influenced by their constituents. And the reason we're asking the Oshkosh Common Council to approve this resolution to support the energy, to urge Congress to support and enact the Energy Innovation Act is because this will really help convince them that it's important that their constituents want this and that there is broad support for this. And climate change, I realize, you know, again, it's weird at what level of government do you deal with this? You know, it is definitely a global and a national issue, but it's also very much a local issue. Climate change has already caused flooding, impacted farms surrounding our communities, and shortened the ice fishing season. If climate change continues without any kind of action against it, there is going to be negative impacts on much of what matters to people here, including our health, our natural environments, and our standard of living. The this plan to do a carbon fee and dividend via the Energy Innovation Act, it works best if you don't wait too long to start doing it. Okay, it's it's a transition. And part of the reason why it works so well is because it is a transition. It's not like throwing a switch off and on. But that means you can't wait a long time before you start the transition. The transition needs to start as soon as possible. As community leaders of Oshkosh, you can help convince our members of Congress that they do need to act on this. And it they will, they will listen to the communities across Wisconsin that that do support this legislation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And
Okay, our next item to be spoken on is going to be number thirty five, which is resolution twenty one eighty seven. Kate Handcock Cook would like to speak again.
Yes, welcome back, Kate.
That would be when I got the numbers mixed up. And I have nothing to say about resolution, the next resolution. So thank you. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. And is there anyone else registered, Pam?
Just that Pamela Henkel, and I don't see her signed on yet. So we'll watch for her.
Okay, thank you. If someone can just get my attention, if she does come in. All right, well, let's move on then to consent agenda. And I have a motion and a second for consent. Let's see here. Was that Councilmember Allison Asby? And the second was?
Second.
Councilmember Erickson. All right, any discussion on consent? Councilmember Ford.
Yes, could we poll item number nine?
All right, item nine.
Thank you.
Any other items to be removed or spoken about on consent? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on consent minus number nine, resolution twenty one sixty one on the employee handbook.
Erickson?
Aye.
Pashal?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Asby?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Mugrauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Period seven.
All right, we have Councilmember Ford. Let's see here, resolution twenty one sixty one, approve employee handbook update, employee development. Councilmember Pashal.
I was just gonna move it.
Yes. Okay, moved by Pashal, seconded by Mugrauer. All right, discussion. Go ahead, Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. I'm abstaining from this because this has some incentives in there for for our employees to go get more training. And one of the places they could go is to the largest and, in my opinion, best MPA program in the state of Wisconsin, but I teach in there.
No bias?
No bias at all. So I I don't want to be a be seen as somehow benefiting myself. So I'm abstaining. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on the motion, or I'm sorry, on resolution twenty one sixty one? All right, let's call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Pashal?
Aye.
Pashal?
Aye.
Ford?
Present.
Allison Asby?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Mugrauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Period six, one, present.
Okay, moving on then to pending ordinances, ordinance twenty one dash eighty, amend parking regulations on Grand Street and Eighth Avenue. We have a motion and a second.
Second.
So motion by Mugrauer, second by Ford, discussion. Any questions on Grand Street and Eighth Avenue parking? All right, please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Pashal?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Asby?
Aye.
Rosie?
Deputy Mayor?
Aye.
Mugrauer?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Period seven.
And ordinance twenty one to eighty one, amend ordinances setting interest rate for special assessment payment plans.
Second.
All right, Mugrauer and Erickson, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Pashal?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Asby?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Mugrauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Period seven.
Okay, we have one new ordinance this evening. There will be no action on this item twenty one dash eighty two. Amend ordinances pertaining to noise restrictions. Would the city attorney or would someone like to speak to the general overview of what those changes would be?
I can, I can talk to that. The ordinance is basically cleans up the current codes. It consolidates everything. So it's all going to be in one place in our code book. The ordinance is basically sets up two categories of offenses for noise, noise in excess of certain noise limits that are set in the ordinance and unreasonable and excessive noise. Most cases involving businesses and events are going to fall under that first category where the ordinance would set a noise limit that can't be exceeded at the property line. It's measured by a noise meter. If it's an impulsive noise, like a beating bass tone or a pure tone, that noise level would drop by five decibels. But if the the ordinance basically tries to set up a clear standard that's measurable and easy to enforce. It also includes clearer language related to outdoor entertainment establishments. In some cases, they were being treated as if they were an exception to the ordinance. They were not. So this makes it clear that any outdoor entertainment places have to meet that new standard. Or the ordinance still has that variance procedure, they could get a variance. The second category is unreasonable and excessive noise. The second category is unreasonable and excessive noise. That's something kind of akin to disorderly conduct. It's like a noisy party or a neighbor who's playing their stereo louder. That's a carryover from the state statutes. It's generally the kind of noise that's generated from the activities of people. Then there's just a couple of other changes. The times of day were changed slightly. The current ordinance goes from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM for days, and 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, no matter the day. The proposed revision would kind of put us on a weekend schedule. It would let us stay up a little later on Friday and Saturday nights and go until 11:00 and sleep in a little longer on Saturday and Sunday mornings and start the day at eight o'clock on Saturday and Sunday mornings. And then the final thing is kind of a nod to our current season. We noted that snow blowers weren't accepted, and I am guilty of this. If you have to get out and get to work by eight o'clock in the morning, a lot of times you're out snow blowing before seven, so technically, under the ordinance, that was a violation. We're changing that to allow like snow blowing types of activities after 10:00 at night and early in the morning so that people can get out and do what they need to do. I think I covered everything. I do have Dave Praska on as well. He helped to draft the ordinance and he can add in if I missed anything.
I guess, okay. Yes, I just wanted to, I guess, clarify one thing that was in there. Did I understand it correctly that some of the noise coming from a car is separated out as a different category? So for example, somebody who is playing their car stereo really loud, is?
That, yep, that mirrors the state statute. There's actually a state statute in Chapter 346. I think it's toward the end of the chapter, maybe about 34694-ish that deals with loud car stereos, and so we're mirroring that.
I see, thank you. Councilmembers, anybody else have questions on the noise ordinance restriction? I know a lot of work went into this and we'll just be a couple of months away from the noise complaint season, so hopefully this will help reduce some of those concerns. All right, well, let's move on then to new resolutions. Resolution 2183. Approve specific implementation plan amendment for a monument sign at 150 Aspire Lane. Plan Commission recommends approval. Do we have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Crowsey and Councilmember Erickson, thank you. Discussion on 2183. Seeing none, can we please call the roll?
Erickson?
Aye.
Peshaw?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Asby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Period seven.
All right, our next resolution then is 2184. Approve Go Transit Site Selection Study. Transit Advisory Board and Plan Commission recommend approval. This is the one everybody is tuned in for, the most exciting, I think, this evening, but in any event, do we have a motion and a second for 2184?
So moved.
All right, Councilmember Erickson, seconded by Ford, discussion. Mr. Collins, perhaps? Would you like to just give a little summary here? This seems to be your bailiwick.
Sure, I can give you a quick summary. So we go transit, we applied for a planning grant back in 2019 in conjunction with the East Central Wisconsin Regional Plan Commission. And we received that. The goal was to do a site selection and feasibility study. So what the study did is it identified a number of sites throughout the city for where we could potentially locate the downtown transit center or the transit center, not necessarily downtown. We looked at a number of locations. And what it does is it also, they did a lot of public input sessions, some stakeholder meetings to find out what kind of amenities our riders and citizens were looking for in the transit facility. And what the study does is then it would set us up to apply for federal funding grants in the future. So the goal was to do a long-term plan, have a site selected, find out what amenities were desired for a long-term facility, and then that will set us up so we could apply for funding opportunities as they come available. So they looked at, started with the whole city, got it down to like seven sites, narrowed it down to a final team, and then ultimately got it down to the selected site, which is the current site, but an expanded footprint. And the main reasons for choosing the current site were obviously we already have operations there. The city already owns a lot of the land, so there's cost implications. Moving to a different site would cost approximately double that. And then secondly, we have some short-term plans with some funding that we have available now that we'll be able to do some improvements to our staff facility at the downtown transit center and also then do some improvements to the aesthetics and to the facility, the platform for riders. We'll be able to do that in the near future, and then this long-term plan will allow us to build upon that to get to our ultimate goal, which is to have a nice facility, new facility, I should say, to improve upon what we have and what we'll be able to do in the coming years here.
Thank you for that summary. Do any council members have questions, further thoughts? Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm really excited about the potential for this site. I'm the council liaison for the Transit Advisory Board, so I think this will really highlight, you know, the importance of all of these transportation options for our residents and I think it's a great plan for us to follow and continue showing the value of transit in our city, so appreciate it.
Yes, I too am very excited about this project. Certainly, a number of years ago, as I worked for the East Central Regional Plan Commission as an intern for urban planning, did a lot of work for them and board, onboard surveys and things of that nature, so it's really exciting to see this project. And perhaps Councilmember Ford, since you're the liaison for Plan Commission, did you have anything else to add?
I'll just say they did a great job of presenting it at Plan Commission and going over their rationale for keeping it at the site, and it looks, yeah, it looks incredible. It's going to be a huge asset.
All right, so again, we are approving the site selection study, so let's please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Peshaw?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Asby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Period six.
Okay, and our agenda was amended. For those of you who were interested in 2185, that item has been removed. And we will move on to 21-86. Approve urging the United States Congress to enact the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. The Sustainability Advisory Board recommends approval. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Peshaw and Deputy Mayor Crowsey, all right, discussion on 2186.
I don't think that I can add anything of merit to the discussion because Kate Hancock Cook did an awesome job and understands the ins and outs of the benefits of this, of this program across the board, so from my research and my activities related to the SAB and my involvement in those discussions leads me to support this. For, for one, one major reason is that it's, this is, sorry, got distracted. This is not just a local issue, but it's also a global issue, so, so we're not just going to be acting locally on this or providing support locally. We're going to be providing a message to our elected leaders in Washington DC that this is also a global path that is beneficial in that way, so that's my, my input, so.
All right, thank you very much. Other council members? Councilmember Ford and then Mugerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I stood on this one for quite a bit, and I appreciate all the folks that emailed and that came to talk to us today. Ultimately, I concluded I just can't, I can't support it. It has nothing to do with the content itself. If I was in Congress, I would vote for this. Climate change is real, and we all have a responsibility to address it. But I view my position here on Common Council as representing Oshkosh residents on matters of local government operations. I think that includes fiscal, social, and legislative issues. That includes advocating on our behalf with state government. That's the level of government from which we derive all of our powers and all of our formal responsibilities. But I just, I didn't run for Congress. I can't in good faith take a specific position on a piece of federal legislation on behalf of almost 70,000 residents that I work for here at Oshkosh. I read the bill. It doesn't direct us in local government to do something or prevent us from doing something specifically. I get that the issue of climate change impacts all of us. I agree with that. I agree that the actions of the federal government impact all of us, and I think that's why we have federal representation. By the logic of this resolution, we should be weighing in on every piece of federal legislation because every piece of legislation impacts our residents. But just personally, right, I respect the right for anyone to disagree. But I don't think it's my place to advocate here for a specific piece of legislation, no matter how much I may agree with it. Thank you.
Councilmember Mugerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Ford took the words right out of my mouth. My sentiments are nearly identical and similar tone. I just don't think it's our place. I also have concerns. I'm gonna be blunt. I have concerns copying, pasting an ordinance directly from a lobbyist and having us approve it and putting my name to it on behalf of the city of Oshkosh. Lobbyists have, you know, they have their own agendas. I'd like more information. Specifically, some of the data that was, that was cited as well as, you know, those surveys and the questions and things like that. But Mr. Ford's got it exactly right. It's not in our purview. It doesn't belong at our desk for us to weigh in on. Because as he said, otherwise, we should be weighing in on every piece of federal legislation that that makes its way through Congress, and that's, that's just not where we're at here, so I won't be supporting this this evening.
Councilmember Allison Asby?
Do, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Ford was extremely articulate in how, how I feel regarding the resolution as well. I certainly pondered this all weekend long, and I would like to personally thank Pat Hallquist for reaching out. I had an opportunity to speak with her today. Very, very smart, smart lady, very passionate. If there was a part of me that that would agree with this, it would be due to the conversation with Pat. She's very compelling. But for the reasons that Councilmember Ford and Councilmember Mugerower stated is the reason why I will not be supporting this as well.
Other council members? All right, so I would just like to say that this is a challenge. This is certainly a challenge. I will be supporting it because if you also look at the local piece of this, that is the Sustainability Advisory Board, as well as our local citizens who have requested this, and the reference to our sustainability plan and its revisions, and quotes, from the sustainability plan. I believe that we have in the past spoken out, with exception, on certain items, and so I will be supporting this. And I would ask that we please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Peshaw?
Aye.
Ford?
No.
Allison Asby?
No.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Mugerower?
No.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Period four, three.
All right, thank you. And I'll just get back to the agenda here. 21 87. Approve divestment from fossil fuels. Sustainability Advisory Board recommends approval. We have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Crowsey, seconded by Erickson, discussion. Councilmember Ford and then Mugerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd actually like to offer an amendment to the proposed resolution. I know I had sent a copy of this to the, to the city manager, but I can, I can read it out here. What I want to do is change that second to last paragraph. It reads now, now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Oshkosh that the City of Oshkosh should immediately cease any new investments in fossil fuels and divest from direct ownership of any public equities and corporation bonds of companies connected with fossil fuels within five years. I want to change that to, now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Oshkosh that the City of Oshkosh shall continue its compliance with state law and current practice by refraining from direct ownership of any public equities and corporation bonds of companies connected with fossil fuels, and then leave everything else the same. Thank you.
All right, since Councilmember Ford has a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Peshaw. Let's see here, discussion on the amendment. First, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mugerower.
Nope, let's go ahead and discuss the amendment, and if it comes back to me, that's completely fine.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Ford?
Yes, thank you. I just want to explain what I'm, what I'm doing here. My intent here is to remove the language that implies we're violating state law by currently investing directly in fossil fuels. I don't think that the, that it's smart of us to put that into a resolution or to pass that into a resolution that implies that our finance department has done something, something untoward. I looked back at the minutes from the Sustainability Board, and I think I appreciate that, that they included those in the packet, and as Councilmember Peshaw said in that meeting, he points out, I think this resolution really reflects the willingness to look into our investment policies in greater detail. And I think the resolution continues to do that, especially by maintaining that last further resolved the City of Oshkosh seek out investments in clean technology, renewable energy, sustainable companies and projects in sustainable communities. So I think this meets the intent, but then also respects respects current state law, but I'm happy to support it. I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Any other discussion on the amendment? All right, so we, Councilmember Peshaw?
Yeah, I guess I want to, I want to agree with Michael, with Mr. Ford in regards to how I feel that creates a much clearer and supportive statement of the work that we do and understanding what is, what we are able to do in regards to that. So that's why I supported the second is because I think it makes more concise. It's more, it's a more concise statement of what is, of what we actually do in regards to these investments, so thank you for the clarification.
Thank you as well. Others? All right, so we'll be voting on the amendment per Councilmember Ford's language that he offered. And let's take the role of 2187. with the, I'm sorry, the amendment to twenty-one eighty-seven.
Erickson?
Aye.
Peshaw?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Asby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Mook Rower?
Aye.
Hulmary?
Aye.
Currie, seven.
All right. Thank you. Next we have council discussion in direction to city manager and future agenda items.
Madam Mayor, we gotta go back to the full vote.
I, I'm sorry. I skipped a step, haven't I? Thank you. Thank you, council member Mook Rower. So now we will vote on twenty-one eighty-seven as amended.
Erickson?
Aye.
Peshaw?
Point of order.
Yes.
Can, I, I think that there should be still some time for discussion on the amended resolution.
We should have a motion and a second on the full item as amended and then discussion. Yes, you are correct.
Okay. So we're, we're motioning to be able to discuss it.
You don't, another motion, you have it on the floor. If the, the amendments passed, you just go right to discussion. Thank you. My mistake. So discussion on the item as amended. Council member Peshaw?
I was gonna allow Mr. Mook Rower to go first since he raised his hands earlier. So.
All right. Council member Mook Rower.
Appreciate it, Mr. Peshaw. Thank you very much. Uh, it'll be brief. Um, you know, coming into this, uh, I was voting against this. Mr. Ford put together some, uh, very reasonable language to clear that up because, uh, I had the exact same concerns as him in terms of what it conveyed and what it, um, what it felt like it was saying. So I appreciate his clearing that up, uh, and offering that amendment. And that with that amendment, I'll support it. So, uh, thank you very much for putting that forward, Mr. Ford.
Thank you, council member Mook Rower, and also again, thank you, Mr. Ford. Any other discussion on this item? I know that this was, um, a matter of discussion at a, a prior council member. So I appreciate the patience of the boards and commissions, uh, working in this way and council members' thoughtfulness. All right. Please call the roll.
Hey, Erickson?
Aye.
Peshaw?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Asby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Mook Rower?
Aye.
Hulmary?
Aye.
Currie, seven.
Right. Now we will go into council discussion and direction of city manager, future agenda items. Future agenda items, uh, let's see here. Was there something specific, uh, city manager Roloff?
I think, uh, not as far as future agenda items. Uh, that's just a place marker in case anybody has any, anything to bring up. Uh, really just future workshops.
Oh yes, that is the meeting with the local legislators, March 11th at 4:00 PM, virtual.
Yes. Uh, Diane's been able to confirm from all of our legislators that they will be able to participate, uh, virtually. So we're pleased to hear that. A couple of the topics that I jotted down already. Uh, obviously the, uh, municipal services payment program, which council, uh, gave to me as a goal, uh, is on that, as well as just general discussion of shared revenue. There's been some discussions, uh, with, uh, Speaker Voss about, uh, preferences for different things. And so I think it's appropriate, it may be even more appropriate to ask them what the, the status of it is rather than us just bring it up. But I will be prepared to provide some information regarding the, uh, the MSP, the municipal services payment program. Uh, and certainly, uh, as a courtesy to our legislators, if there's anything else, it, it would be good to, uh, let them know in advance. So if they want to prepare any comments or be prepared for questions, I think that would be appropriate. So if you've got any suggestions, uh, either share them with me now or just pass them on to me and I will, uh, add and report back at the, uh, February twenty, uh, third meeting. And actually we'll have the March ninth meeting as well. So we'll have a couple more opportunities, but the sooner we get it to them, uh, the better.
Do any council members have anything specific right this moment? How about we set a, uh, let's see here, March 11th. So that gives us several weeks. Would you like a deadline?
Um, you know, I would think that if you could give me that by, uh, the Wednesday prior to the, uh, March ninth meeting, which would really be, uh, about March third. Uh, that would be best because then I could put all those items right here on the agenda for you to look at. So on March ninth, when the council meets, you'll know exactly what those topics are going into Thursday's meeting and we will have ample time to notify our legislators as well. So yeah, I'd say March third would be great.
All right. Council, you heard it. March third. Very good then. And then the next item, uh, is the board and commission submissions of recommendations to council governance flow chart. That is a little bit of a mouthful, but, uh, this topic came up during the quarterly board and commission chair meeting, um, with regard to, well, there've been a, a few times where there's been a little bit of a stumble in terms of some of the boards and commissions being able to move their items on to the, uh, agenda for council review. Uh, city manager Roloff and, uh, some of the board chairs, um, came up with this idea. City manager Roloff, do you want to speak to that?
I did not come up with the idea, but I thought it was a good idea. I want to give, uh, uh, SAB Chair Margie Davy the credit. So, uh, she threw it out and the minute she said it, I was like, you know, we need to reconcile those, particularly with those, uh, boards and commissions where their, their area of interest is not in a specific area. Think of Parks Advisory Board, Parks, Plan Commission, you know, planning, community development. SAB, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion, Bike and PED crosses multiple departments. And that's probably where the most, uh, difficulty lies in there. And, uh, the governance flow chart would just basically talk about how things would flow. Uh, the examples earlier regarding the, um, divestment policy is probably a good example too because it has to do with sustainability. It's staffed by community development, but this had to do with, uh, a finance issue. It reconciled itself out, um, I, I thought very well. Mr. Van Gomper worked, uh, with Chair Davy to do it. But I think there's some value to doing that and, uh, I've assigned Mr. Fitzpatrick the task of, uh, of working on that flow chart. It'll take some time, uh, because I think we need to develop it for all, um, all the different commissions so that there's, it can apply to everybody. So we'll be working on that and sharing it with you, uh, as we go on. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Yes. Uh, this, this did come up, uh, I think with Bike and PED once before. And, uh, like I said, a couple of other board and commissions. And so hopefully this just helps with some onboarding as well as when, um, the city attorney's office goes through, um, you know, each of those board and commission kind of orientations. And, uh, hopefully this will help with some of those, uh, flow issues. And then, um, let's see here. I asked for this item to be placed on, um, some of you may, uh, be familiar with Amanda Gorman. She is our, um, national poet laureate and, uh, has quite eloquently, um, been very visible lately. And, uh, it inspired something that I had thought about a couple of years ago and kind of tucked it away that, um, I was part of a group in Appleton when Ellen Court was appointed as the poet laureate for Appleton. And so I just wanted to bring this to council to see if you would have an interest. I think in your orange folders, um, I provided some materials that kind of stepped through that process or some of the options if we have an interest. And, you know, it's a small thing that I think that, um, we can kind of add to some of the hopefulness and some of our healing and resiliency from a tough couple of years. And, um, I've also reached out to, uh, the library director to ask if they might have an interest in participating. Should council desire us to, um, this would be a very small investment. Um, so I just wanted to bring it to council to see what your thoughts were about having a, an addition to our arts and culture here in Oshkosh and creating a poet laureate position. Council mayor Ford?
Yeah, I think it's awesome. I think poetry is awesome. I love the fact that the, uh, the proposal, it's the stuff you shared has an educational component to, to make sure that that person has the responsibility to, to get out there in the community. So yeah, I think that's fun.
Council member Erickson?
Thanks. I agree. I think it could be a fun, uh, collaboration maybe between, you know, like you said, with the library or school district or even maybe the DEI committee. I think there's a lot of great partnerships that we could, um, work with, uh, to create this. So I like it.
Thank you. Others? Um, I see, uh, council member Peshaw and then, um, perhaps, um, I see Director, Director Gillicson Dewey is here with us too. Perhaps he'd like to speak to that. Council member Peshaw?
Sure. No, I, I think this is a great idea. I think it adds to the vibrancy of our, of our community. Um, it brings a different, um, connection, uh, to, to what Oshkosh is, uh, by, by having this type of role. So, um, I'd be fully in support of, of doing something like this. So looking forward to hopefully making it happen.
Well, thank you very much. And, uh, I will just, uh, say one thing that I, uh, again, these were some suggestions, um, from the poetry.org, um, organization about, you know, s- some of the ways that cities can do this. Um, I don't specifically have a preference of this being a mayoral appointment. Um, so perhaps, um, our library director can speak to that as to what role they might be interested in playing.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Oshkosh Public Library has a long history of supporting the creative work of, uh, the people of Oshkosh, especially in the area of language and writing with our Lake Fly Writers Conference that we've worked with the Oshkosh Writers Group and the Wisconsin Writers Association. Um, also the Mark Brunwald Comic Creation Challenge that we've partnered with a number of other, uh, area, um, uh, businesses and, and, and other groups. So we're, we have an ongoing interest in, um, making, uh, the word more powerful in, in, uh, Oshkosh. Um, we would be happy to, uh, meet with, uh, you, Madam Mayor or any other, uh, parties that, uh, you think might be interested in this or that the council would like to, uh, uh, urge to be involved, uh, to explore how we might make this happen. Um, I'm, I'm very supportive of it. Um, as you may know, the, the, uh, gazebo amenity in, uh, William Waters Plaza is slated to, uh, go forward very soon. So I'm envisioning, uh, uh, an inaugural event with our, uh, city poet laureate at the, uh, William Waters Plaza gazebo in the future. So we're very supportive. We're, um, open to partnering with, uh, whomever, uh, you think would be, um, interested in moving this forward.
I suppose I should unmute myself to go forward with the spoken word here. All right. Well, thank you, uh, for, um, honoring and, uh, looking at this item. Uh, again, there are a couple of things that I'm, I'm not sure that, um, uh, well, it would probably make more sense that, you know, perhaps the library board be more involved. So, so yes, I'd love to, uh, meet on that and I appreciate everyone considering this item.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Roloff?
Thank you. Uh, my suggestion would be, you know, Mr. Mr. Gillicson Dewey has offered to work with you. What I would suggest is, uh, you know, organize a few interested people and then probably come back with a resolution. I don't know if necessarily you need to do an ordinance per se, but, uh, the, the, uh, site that you, uh, had provided the council, there's a lot of information there. You can certainly, uh, gather a lot from there. It doesn't say the method by which you do it, but it had a lot of good suggestions. So I would suggest if you're gonna do it, just, uh, perhaps do it by resolution. Uh, then it gives you a little more flexibility.
Yes, that's what the intent was. I just wanted to gather some information from council on their feelings. So thank you. All right. And then the last item on council discussion is the current council portrait. So we have a few more months here, well, not by much, to capture the current council portraits. And, uh, it looks like city manager's assistant Diane had reached out to folks. And I believe there is, um, let's see here, again, opening up another digital document, which is in very small print here. Uh, it looks like we had, uh, three folks respond. Uh, there's a preference for, um, the indoor versus outdoor, but in smaller groups for that purpose. Uh, city manager Roloff, I think you're muted.
Yes, I am. I had to move my mouse over. The, uh, the real consensus was that the council did not like the idea of just a, uh, a collection of headshots. So, um, I think it was, you see some of the comments as well. We could do outdoor and be very socially distant through the magic of Photoshop. Um, we could certainly accommodate everybody in the council chambers. You'll just be going in there with one or two of your fellow council members or staff members who would normally be seated and we could create the illusion of, of you being in that room. Uh, everybody would know the reality from, uh, who has memories of 2020, 2021. But given the fact that, um, there are, you know, cer- certain council members who are stepping down, we aren't going to have an opportunity to, to get you together with much time. So I wanted to get it on, uh, just get your preference. You want to do an outdoor one, um, wouldn't recommend this week, but outdoor or we can do the Photoshop option and we can accommodate either one of those, depending on what your preference is.
Council member Allison Asby, then Deputy Mayor Crowsey.
Photoshop.
I will second the Photoshop.
I'll third the Photoshop.
All right.
It won't be me doing the Photoshop so you're safe that it won't get, yeah. But Thompson's has, has done a very nice job for us. And they had actually, if, uh, you may recall a few years ago, they photoshopped in, uh, Mr. Peck. I would challenge you to find that and see how he was actually done. If you look really, really close, you might be able to see it. But since everybody's gonna be pretty much photoshopped in, I think we can pull it off. So, um, I will have Diane reach out to you. Um, we'll probably find a similar time of day, uh, because I know that was one of the things that, uh, the photographer wanted to do last time. So, um, appreciate the feedback and we will do that. Lickety split before, uh, at least, uh, before, uh, the, uh, second Tuesday in April. So thank you very much.
Mr. Roloff, based on the year, maybe you could just have them swap heads on bodies.
I'm going to ask the mayor to just let me out of that question.
I, I was just gonna say, I was going to say, let's, let's do this outside. Let's show some real Wisconsin winter spirit. I think, um, I would speculate that council member Ford might agree with me, perhaps Erickson, but, um, I certainly will go along with the Photoshop, uh, for the, uh, good of the order.
Yeah. I thought it might be kind of fun to be the one photo that isn't in the chambers to, you know, commemorate the ridiculousness of this past year, but I'll, I'll yield to the majority.
Same. I agree.
I would like no reminder of what 2020 brought. Um, so.
All right. All right. Very good. Well, let's go ahead and, um, move on then to the report of council liaison for boards and commissions. Uh, I just have one to report on and that's the Parks Advisory Board. Uh, we did, um, uh, get some information last night at the Parks Advisory Board on the cost estimates for the Four Seasons Phase One, uh, Lakeshore Park Four, Four Seasons building. Uh, came in a little bit higher than was anticipated and I'm sure we're gonna be seeing, uh, more information on that. The renderings are all quite lovely, of course, but 2.6 million. So, uh, that was a point of discussion as well as, um, the approval of the agreement on Pollak Heart. the approval of the agreement on Pollock Park Pool with the school district. And I will go ahead and yield to other council members who would like to speak on their liaison spots. Councilmember Allison Osby.
The mayor, last week was Committee on Aging. And Doug had come and did a presentation for us. So he covered some of the information, but far more in depth this evening, but certainly great for seniors who tune into that. And then also too, did have a guest that did speak to COVID and the different social media groups that are support groups for those that have been impacted by COVID. It may have some long-term or lasting effects of it. And then the Convention Visitors Bureau, I was in post-op recovery, so I wasn't a part of the meeting. However, Ms. Amy Albright did send some information. One of the things that's been talked about is back in 2018, that was while Mr. Herman, Councilmember Herman, was on the CBB Board, they had done a strategic plan, had talked about rebranding. That was something that we were hopefully going to start to work on now, but it was very dependent on an EDA grant. There was, they did submit that grant. Unfortunately, we did not receive it. So it is still the desire to want to look at rebranding, but it's going to come down to resources to be able to do that. So in the meantime, there's a a group or a team of people that are going to come together to kind of discuss that. Other than that, did want me to mention that they are postponing, not canceling Restaurant Week, but will be at a different time. And also too, that they have been working very actively with the arena in getting events there. I guess they did have a competition there a couple of weekends in January, and then they're looking to hopefully have some other events later this year. So that's it for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the update on the branding. That's something that I've been anxiously and I know many people in the community are excited to look at that. So other council member liaison reports. Councilmember Ford.
Yes, and Commission met, and we went over most of it, but the Sustainability Board also presented their goals to us for next year. I just wanted to point out that you can get those if you look at the agenda for the February 2nd Plan Commission Meeting, if you're interested in seeing what those are.
Thank you. All right. If there are no other reports, we'll move on then to City Manager announcements and statements. City Manager Roloff, it's yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few items for your interest. We have a few memos in the in the report regarding our Pazer rating that we do on an annual basis. That's the first one. That's just rating our streets, and that serves as a good source of information that we put into our capital improvement program about the condition of our streets. So you'll see that in there. Also, a test of our stormwater basins as well, just making sure that our sediment thickness isn't getting too big, otherwise we got to start cleaning that out. The housing study and needs assessment by RDG, that was discussed with council previously. So we're initiating that. That's coming out of some healthy neighborhoods money. Our agreement for the SRF Consulting Group to do the ADA audit that that staff had brought forward, that's something that we need to get done to do a facilities audit for how we're doing relative to meeting our ADA requirements. So and then finally, a Duncan Solution, basically it's a parking permit issuance and citation processing program that we have that'll, or service that we'll be able to implement that will improve efficiencies in processing our citations and whatnot. So those, I've got, if you have any questions regarding those, otherwise I'll move on, but those are ones that I report to council as they come up. Renewal of 2122 liquor licenses. Council will recall that after COVID pandemic began, that staff recommended that we waive our liquor licenses for the for the coming year. This was right in the aftermath of these establishments being closed in mid-March, right after we declared the emergency. I think that was well received. The year is coming to a close, and the clerk's office is starting to process or send out information. It's our intent to not do a waiver for the upcoming year. We did one waiver. Some of them have been opened. If anybody has a concern about that, please let me know. You don't have to tell me tonight. I can put it back on the agenda, but I didn't think we wanted to do a second year of waivers. But I'm certainly open to that, but I wasn't planning on doing that, and I just wanted to report that to council. Outstanding issues, I want to click over to that so I can refer to those items. Council will notice that we've added my four goals that council gave me as as goals and just status reports. So you know, the most recent one, I would say has to do with municipal services payment program. It was brought up at a chamber function recently, and Senator Fine's office reached out to me. So you know, I think we're going to be ready for our March 11th meeting with them. Mayor made some suggestions to me about reaching out to a group regarding racial issues, and had a very good discussion with someone who represents children of black and brown families. And great discussion, and we're going to continue that discussion. Forgive me while I zoom in a little bit, because my, it doesn't do well. I got to squint a little harder. The facility needs is an ongoing issue. And as I mentioned, I had met with Day by Day Shelter about new approaches to address homelessness. That's going to be an ongoing issue. So I don't have anything really to report at this point on that, aside from my meeting with Molly Boots with Day by Day. The one I do want to bring to your attention is the ongoing drama saga of our mask ordinance. Council's direction was for me to bring it back if the governor's order was in imminent danger of being revoked. And last week, we were probably at DEFCON 4. But then the governor's order got extended. So, you know, several of you called me about this. Meanwhile, the city attorney has been preparing an ordinance that we feel now she wrote it in such a way that we can basically go in and out depending on what wind is shifting in Madison, so that if we need a mask ordinance, it's in place. So my suggestion to the council would be, unless there's something drastic that happens in the next two weeks, that we put it on the next agenda for council's consideration. My preference to put it on a regular agenda is then that we can be very transparent about it being on the agenda, not putting it on a special meeting where there could be concerns about how it was done. We can do it on February 23rd. We can give two weeks' notice. The media can pick up on it and get addressed. And then if something happens where the state says they remove a mask order, ours can get inserted. It will not take effect unless it moves back and forth. So I know the county's talking about it, but I don't necessarily want to rely solely on the county because it's not this elected body. It's a different elected body. And we've seen all that go on with the state. So if the council, and I believe at the time, council said, bring it back. So the intent would, for me at this time, would be that we could bring back an ordinance. And Ms. Lawrenson and her staff have prepared a draft ordinance. And our intent would be to get it out to you tomorrow, so you have two weeks to look at it, absorb it. And I would say as long as things are going along normally, I would suggest, you know, you do the normal readings, even though there may be some opposition and some emotion attached to it, at least you can be able to get it through a process that people will recognize. But my intent, or my plan is to put it on the 23rd agenda and give you two weeks to to look at it before the first reading. Happy to answer any questions you might have about that. Otherwise, look forward to Attorney Lawrenson forwarding you that tomorrow. And that's really all I have on outstanding issues, but happy to answer any questions.
All right. So folks, any questions on any of the outstanding issues? I see that we also have on the agenda, well, I guess it's going to Plan Commission, and then the next council meeting for the transitional residential housing ordinance, or I'm sorry, zoning. I'm trying to read this with.
The draft ordinance to.
Yes, the transitional residential housing language.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Lyons provided a copy for the council and and we're in providing a copy to the residents. So it goes to the Plan Commission next week on the 16th. And then the first reading would be on the 23rd for council consideration, and then March 9. Again, we're not aware of any pending applications. It's just that want to get out in front of it before, you know, before something like that might happen. And it would change. It's still Grandfathers in 1105 Jefferson, but it would limit it to zones where boarding houses are currently allowed. And that's probably the simplest way to describe it. So it would be in multifamily-type zones, or institutional, or other zones like that. It would not be in single or two-family residential. So thanks for the reminder, Mayor.
And certainly, council, I see Mr. Lyons is on with us too. If council has questions or further thoughts on that, Councilmember Mugra.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager Roloff, just a reminder, I think last council meeting when this was brought up, I requested that this go through Police Chief Smith, for him to have a chance to review it and give his his thoughts on any unintended consequences that maybe his his background might see in terms of how this would be applicable to, you know, the city of Oshkosh, and what he sees from from his side of this as well. I think it'd be good for us to hear.
I did discuss that with Chief Smith, then he will be prepared to. I don't think there's a concern. And the way the ordinance is written, the requirement for basically bringing it to a hearing is going to help a great deal to have the public express their concerns. From a law enforcement standpoint, the short answer is, he doesn't see a great deal of it concerned. They've had a good, from a law enforcement standpoint, they haven't had any issues, but certainly the residents have had issues. And and that's where I think you're going to hear mostly from the residents. Okay.
If I could just add something to this too, you know, these public hearings are not just for expressing concerns about problems. They're also, if you, you know, there's a saying in the planning world, NIMBY, and that stands for not in my backyard. But there's another phrase that's used also. It's YIMBY. And there are folks who have yes in my backyard. So you're certainly able to, for those out in the public that wish to speak to any of our any of these public hearings on items, they can express support. It does not have to be only opposition. So I just thought I would remind folks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well said. So that's all I have on outstanding issues. I do have a couple shameless commercial messages. One is a reminder that early voting in the clerk's office continues through this Friday. I believe Pam, it ends on Friday at 5:00 PM. Is that correct?
It is correct.
So, you know, 4:30 normal days, but Friday, the last day, is 5:00 PM. I wish I could tell you lots of great numbers like we were talking about back in November. I would say that for a winter primary, the mail-in numbers are good. We've had almost 3,700 requests through today for mail-in ballots, but they still have to get mailed in. We've gotten not quite 1,100 returned, if I'm if I'm reading this right. In office voting, if you're worried about social distancing, you need not. We've had a whopping 39 people show up over the course of a week and a half. So our highest day was 14. And if you divide that by an eight-hour day, you're basically getting less than two people an hour. So you can certainly come now and vote at City Hall early if you choose to, or go to the polls. It's getting a little late, to be honest with you. If you haven't already requested your ballot, I guess my gut feeling would be, be careful about doing it now unless you live very close to getting it delivered by mail, because it may not get back in time. And it must be received by election day, correct Pam?
Correct. And if, you know, you're nervous about the mail, I would encourage the voters to use our secure drop box located at City Hall here.
And it's very effective, I think. It's so effective, I think some people thought that City Hall was still closed. But City Hall is open, and you can certainly come and vote in person. But the mail, the drop-off, you can do that on weekends, and we comb it very frequently so that your your vote is secure and whatnot. So just wanted to remind everybody to get out and vote on February 16th. And then lastly, he's, Chief Stanley is cleverly hidden behind Mr. Fitzpatrick's name there. So Chief Stanley wanted to report on the Fire Department Food and Toy Drive. And so I wanted to give him an opportunity to to give some news on how that went. Chief?
Thanks, Mr. Roloff. Clearly, I'm using John Fitzpatrick's name, but thankfully, I'm not him. Just wanted to talk real briefly about the toy and food drive that we completed for 2020. We just got all the results. You know, I think it's incredibly significant for 2020. You know, that's when people really, you know, are always in need in the community at that time of year. And we've been able to, for many years, provide that service of the food and toy drive. And our firefighters put that effort together to to gather cash donations and food and toys to go out to those in need. You know, it was a little more challenging this year, because normally we would go out and, you know, parade through the streets and take up the collections in person, and, you know, we weren't able to do that. You know, I'm so impressed and proud of our firefighters, but also of our community. That this year, we were able to collect 2,620 toys valued at $36,179. That we gathered almost $2,000 in cash and almost 5,000 pounds in food. You know, so this really is a testament to not only our firefighters trying to give back to the community, but this is really a testament to the community supporting the community, you know, and taking care of of our own. So I thought that was very notable. And wanted to share that with council and in the public.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for Chief?
No, thank you. Thank you very much for updating us on that.
And Madam Mayor, that's all I have from from my announcements and statements, unless you have any questions.
I do not see anyone raising their hand, so we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Second.
All right, Councilmember Mugra, and Puschel. All right, please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Puschel?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Mugra?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Period. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for filling in for me. Good night.